Looks like everybody survived the eclipse. Fair enough. All right, let's see, Grantville City Council Work Session, Monday, April the 8th, 2024, 6:30, come to order. Mr. Gresham?
The first thing that we have on your agenda is the public hearing. We will have a public hearing on zoning ordinance number 2024-04, text member, text amendment to the neighborhood unit plan, Article 3A, Plan Unit District Regulations. The Neighborhood Unit Plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission. They recommended that the City Council adopt the zoning ordinance text amendment as presented in Exhibit A. The public hearing will be on Monday, April the 22nd, 2024, at 6:30 PM or thereafter. Second item on the work session agenda is the reading, the second reading of ordinance 2024-04, the text amendments to the zoning ordinance Neighborhood Unit Plan.
All right, any discussion? Again, this is an existing zoning we have. We're just making some tweaks to it by, it had an original maximum size, it's 25 acres. That makes no sense. Got rid of that. We've got the dwelling size 1,400 square feet. We also added some things that frankly, we kind of wanted like, streetlights, all utilities have to be underground, sidewalks, talking about undisturbed areas, which would be naturally within this anyway. So that's all we're doing on this one. Any discussion?
I have, Mr. Mayor, I have two things to bring up. I'm looking at this text amendment that went before the Planning Commission. And why does it say name of applicant is Mayor Ricky Clark?
Because I brought this forward. No property's being reserved. We're just tweaking an existing zoning that we have.
No, I mean, this is the first time I've seen anything like this. Where it goes before the Planning Commission, the applicant is one of us, and then it comes to us for approval. Mr. City Attorney, is that appropriate? For the name of the applicant?
Certainly the mayor or the council can ask that the Planning Commission consider a text amendment to the ordinance.
The mayor or the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Individual members of the council.
So any of us, Mr. City Attorney, any of us could go before the Planning Commission and ask them to do something? Is that correct?
You can ask for a text amendment to the...
And then, no, we have to recuse ourselves when it comes before the body?
No.
No? I've never seen it on this before.
Unless you're doing it for your own personal gain or your own personal property, which that's not the case here. But of course, the mayor's not going to vote on this unless it becomes a, unless it's a tie anyway.
And that's going to still vote?
I, I'm, this is curious. I've never seen this done before.
We just got through doing two, the last two sessions.
As an applicant, and you were the applicant?
Yes. I was the one who pushed the two zonings forward, absolutely. Which I am free to do based on the Code of Ordinances.
So when you go before them as an applicant, you would be the applicant?
I think the wording is wrong. It's technically not an applicant. I'm not applying to change zoning on a specific piece of property. I think the term is incorrect in the document. I'm the one who pushed forward to make this change to an existing zoning we have.
So like the presenter, not the applicant?
The sponsor, correct.
Name of applicant. That's just, that's just unusual. The other thing, Mayor, this ordinance, this ordinance is numbered. And I think we had this discussion before where it says in the code that the ordinances and resolutions are not numbered until they're approved. And this ordinance is numbered. And that's another question I had before the City Attorney. That section of the code, I think it's 3.08. I didn't bring my code with me because it's not up to date. And I tried to get a left date copy from the City Clerk's office, and they said they don't have enough today copy of the code.
3.08 deals with personnel policies.
No, it's a 3-point, well, I know it's 3-point something. It has to do with resolutions and ordinances. And they're not supposed to be numbered until they're approved. Upon approval.
Okay, whether they're numbered or not, we had this...
The city manager, what Al said last time is that they all get a number. And if they're not approved, they go in the book and it says, "Not approved."
I know, that's what the city manager said, but that's not, that's not accurate. That's not what the code says. The code says they're not numbered until they are approved.
Well, I think maybe you're referring to Section 2.11D, which says the city clerks shall number ordinances consecutively in the order of their final adoption and shall copy them into the permanent record book used solely for this purpose. And the city clerks should do likewise for resolutions.
Yes, that's the one.
I mean, I don't...
In order of their final adoption. They're not numbered until they are adopted, right?
I don't think they are numbered out of order of their final adoption. So, I mean, I don't see that that says that a number is not assigned until their final adoption. It just says consecutively in order of their adoption.
So you don't think that means that you could, you have to wait until they're adopted before you start numbering them?
I don't, I don't read it that way, no, ma'am.
Okay, anything else on this one?
Just one thing.
Yes, sir.
Planning, zoning, you know, pretty much approved every thing, nothing to do with, nothing I did said.
Okay, all right. Okay.
The next item is Discussion on Resolution Number 2024-04, ELMAG. That stands for Local Maintenance Improvement Grant Project for fiscal year 2024, Downtown Area Drainage Improvement Project. You will notice that on the approved capital improvement plan, Church Street slash Main Street drainage is listed. The reason that we have this resolution is for the record in that we have received ELMAG funds in fiscal year 2022, fiscal year 2023, and of course, this year, fiscal year 2024, from the Georgia Department of Transport. We accumulated these funds and GDIT, Georgia Department of Transportation, would certainly like to know what we're doing with them since we have accumulated them for three years. Therefore, we have this resolution. I called it Downtown Area Drainage rather than Church Street, Main Street Drainage, just so it is more symbolic downtown where we're going to do the drainage project. I described it from Main Street, from Post Street to Church Street, including but not limited to the intersection of Main Street, Griffin Street, West Broad Street, and Church Street. It's designated as the fiscal year 2024 ELMAG project for the city of Grantville.
Okay, discussion?
Do we have an estimated timeline on this?
No, ma'am. We'll do it as quick as Brennan can get to drawings. I hope that they will be done in a month to 60 days. He's been given his marching orders, but I don't know whether he will be half-stepping or full-stepping.
So something within six months?
Yes, miss.
Okay. All right, next, Mr. Gresham.
Next item is Discussion on Resolution 2024-05, Accepting the Fiscal Year 2023 Audited Financial Statements. We do this every year because the Department of Revenue likes to know that we have accepted the statements. And this year, we've got another clean opinion. In other words, there are no discrepancies. And additionally, we do not have any write-ups. We have corrected the write-up in that they have said previously that we needed to have separate individuals doing the receipt of funds and then the deposit of funds. So there was a check and balance to them. Prior to our augmenting the City Clerk's office, there were not enough bodies to do that. Now we have a sufficient number. And I will point out that individuals help out when necessary.
Okay, and I want to make one comment on this as well. I want to commend the, Mr. Gresham, City Clerk's Office, Roddy and Bayhan, as well as Joan Henry, our Assistant Director of Public Works, as well as Police Chief Whitlock and Cliff Schreifer, for really maintaining fiduciary responsibility when it comes to spending versus the budget. It's important that when we spend money, that it's spent properly, that it's spent effectively and stated within our means. And this financial audit supports that. Okay? Other discussion?
I'm probably going to have some questions because I was not able to get my pack in until today, so I haven't had adequate time to go through all of this. But I probably have some questions at the regular meeting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Gresham?
Okay, the next item for your consideration is Discussion on Resolution Number 2024-06, which is an updated capital improvement plan. And the updates are on Exhibit A, which is behind the resolution. You will note that what is added is the gas line extension on Bohannon Road. We are having houses built out Bohannon Road. They have requested gas lines. And we will extend the gas line out there because it's always good to add gas customers when we can. The next item that's added is one that the City Council has approved, the Veterans Park Flag Poles. The next item, and the final item that was put on, is the permanent restroom at Post Street Park. People have asked for that, so we have that on our capital improvement plan. Those are the updates.
And let me add on the gas line. We are actually extending that gas line beyond the plant construction for future development. There's some larger tracks up there that we'll ultimately be building. And our plan as a city is, we have a huge gas footprint. And it's very good to have that in our utility mix. So we're going to be taking advantage of spending a little money to extend these gas lines, knowing we've got a lot of future customers coming online. In addition, we're going to be talking about incentivizing these folks to make sure they take up gas. Of course, as I said in the town hall, I would never build a house or move in a house that didn't have gas. All right. Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, the first one is the downtown revitalization streetscape.
Okay, we've already, those have already been approved. We're just talking about the last three.
There's no discussion on those, we have...
Nope, they've already been done. We've already approved them, gone through them. So it's really the last three on the list.
Well, can I ask a question about it?
Okay.
Okay, the downtown revitalization streetscape is not $965,000, almost a million dollars. For downtown streetscape?
It's the picture that's in the LCI?
It's the LCI plan.
Where they're making the little fountain in the middle with all the seating?
Well, it's more than that, too. It's redoing the roads, it's tearing up the sidewalks, it's burying the electric, you know, the utilities down there. That is, this is the LCI plan.
Oh, it is. Oh, so that, the LCI plan, we've already...
Yes.
We've already moving forward on that, on those recommendations and decided that was what we were going to do. So there wouldn't be anything else we could do under that plan, right?
Not currently.
Okay, thank you. The next question is a permanent bathroom. It's only $50,000. So we have bathrooms over there, but they're blocked off and they're only used by the...
They're in the splash park.
Yeah, they're the splash park. So where are you going to put, for $50,000, where are you going to be able to put another bath, set of bathrooms there?
It hasn't been determined now, but it would probably be in the open area by the pavilions. It'll be a self-compostine bathroom.
Okay, that connected to the sewer?
No.
Okay, I was wondering, $50,000 is not very much money for, you know, men and women's bathroom.
It will be one bathroom.
Unisex.
Unisex.
Like an outhouse? No. It's like a...
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Like, like, like an outhouse, but it's being a compost, a composting bathroom.
That would be permanent, that would be permanent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, like they have a state park.
Absolutely. It's a member park pattern, like state parks.
Yes, state parks have that kind of bathrooms. All over West Point Lake, you'll see them.
Okay, anything else? All right, Mr. Gresham?
Okay, the next item we have for your discussion is Resolution 2024-07, which is a pole attachment license agreement. We have Spectrum Southeast coming in to the city. They have applied for a franchise agreement. We have given them a franchise agreement, which the fee is 5% of revenues. And along with that, they need to attach their wires to something. So they've decided they'd like to attach them to the city of Grantville's poles. So we have entered into a pole attachment license agreement with them for the use of the city of Grantville's poles erected or to be erected within the corporate limits of the city of Grantville or wherever the city of Grantville provides electric energy. This was done by Electric Cities of Georgia. They prepare these agreements. They basically negotiate them. There is no negotiation. It's a set fee. But they handle the dealings with anyone who wants to come in to the city of Grantville and attach to our poles. We give them a license agreement in return for their contribution to the city of Grantville's general fund in the amount of 5% of gross revenues.
So to add to that, I've met with Spectrum several times, particularly on this. They're probably about a year away from any deployment. They still have to bring their backbone in here, their fiber backbone. And I know we have Comcast and AT&amp;T is still working on a deployment here, but it's always helpful to have multiple providers. So this is great for them to do this, to come in. And it'll give the citizens of Grantville other choices other than, frankly, right now they just have Comcast. And I mean, satellite if you want to pay that much, but, so this is what this one's about. Any questions? Okay, moving on.
The next item for consideration is Discussion on the First Reading of Ordinance Number 2024-05 to amend and restate the retirement plan for the employees of the city of Grantville. This is a defined benefit retirement plan for the employees. The reason we have to pass or we are being asked to pass or adopt the ordinance, again, we have done it once before, but we are asked to do it again because the law has been updated. They have gotten a letter from IRS that says our retirement plan or GMA's retirement plan has been approved by the Internal Revenue Service. So when it's approved, the overall plan's approved, all the participants in the plan must acquiesce or show their approval of the plan. And therefore, we must adopt our ordinance, which is number 2024-05. It's really per form, but we need to do it to comply with GMA. Nothing in the ordinance changes.
All right, questions? Okay.
The next item and the last item is Discussion on the First Reading of Ordinance Number 24-06 to amend Chapter 2, Article 7, Section 2-162, to establish the process for filling vacancies on a Recreation Advisory Board, terms of appointment and for other purposes. This was suggested by the Recreation Advisory Board, and it's before you for your consideration. Basically, what it says, anytime there's a vacancy, if a new person is appointed, that appointee shall complete the expired term. When any member's term expires, they shall be required to apply for reappointment in the same manner as new appointments are made. In other words, this clarifies the fact that they don't stay on the board until their successor is named. They stay on the board until they either resign or their term expires. And then all people or individuals, that's a bad word, people, all individuals who want to serve again have to reapply and be appointed by the City Council.
Okay, questions?
Just to reiterate, if I quit one month and six months into my term, you replace me, that person's only serving six months. And then they have to reapply if they want to continue.
To your current, correct.
Yeah.
The other thing that this changes is the previous language said that if you were appointed, if someone resigned and you were appointed to fill the term, that you could not then be reappointed for a full term. This changes that to allow someone who's appointed to finish a term to then be reappointed for a full term.
Right. Okay. Questions?
No, is that going to apply to all of our, all our boards now?
This change is just related to the Recreation Board.
Well, do you think we should do it for all our boards that way? Does it make sense?
I was assuming they pretty much already have, yeah.
This is the one that does not have it.
Correct.
I read, yes. I know for White Plains Island, you get reapply and everybody else acts the same thing.
Right.
This is the only one that didn't have the wording.
If my memory is correct, when we made appointments just based on somebody saying that this person wants to stay on there, they didn't have to reapply. So what I'm saying, if we're going to do this and make it, we should make it uniform, you know, so that we apply to all of our boards, a uniform process for appointments.
Well, I think what we're saying is example with planning and zoning, once those terms are up, if they want to stay on, they have to reapply. I mean, they have to send a letter and say, "I want to be back on board."
They haven't been doing that. We haven't been getting applications before us saying we would like to be, you know what I'm saying? It hasn't been happening that way. We've just been going by the word of a person, you know, either the chairperson saying that, you know, that they wanted to reapply, not the person didn't have to, you know, fill out another application.
Well, planning and zoning is a little different because Brennan is the planning and zoning coordinator. because Brennan, Brennan is the planning and zoning coordinator and commissioner. So he basically works with the planning and zoning. He, he will come up with, you know, they, they want, email him and say, "I want to re, I want to be, stay on planning and zoning."
Yeah, I understand that.
They did that, they did that. But I think for the other one, the HPC, I agree, they probably need to do another application.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it should be uniform, I mean, that's-
Well, I think it's already in there like that.
Well, I think, I think what she's saying, which is probably true, is we should make sure that going forward, that we enforce what is imposed.
Yeah, that's it. That's why we need to make this change, or they can, you know, reapply.
Correct, okay.
Alright, Mr. Shaver.
Well, that completes the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Now for the announcements. Meag power 2023 year-end settlement for the city of Grantville is $41,669. We used our Evergreen election, which was approved by the City Council last year, to place that money in the flexible operating account short-term portfolio of the municipal competitive trust, which we call our rainy day fund in case of disaster. The next item is a cost-to-service study, which we had on our electric rates. We strive to provide safe, reliable, and competitive price electricity to all our customers. As such, we have to have a cost study done at least once every five years. It's done by Electric Cities of Georgia Analytic Services, an independent organization, so no one can say we fudged the numbers. They determine if our rates need to be restructured to more adequately reflect all our costs with supplying electricity. They have done that study. It was done in October of this year. So, we got the study, and while the study suggests a slight rate increase, we have decided not to raise electric rates while we continue to monitor the volatility of our energy sources. The electric market has highs and lows, and although we would like to have a margin of 10% or 15%, we don't have that. We have less than that. However, we will continue to monitor the situation, and we can always look to raise rates, maybe next year or the following year. But right now, we feel that we're in a good position with our electric rates and not to raise rates. The next item on the announcements is our pet waste stations in our parks. This was suggested by Councilmember David Clark. We thought it was a great idea and a necessity since we don't have a dog park. So in other words, we're allowing animals in our parks. So as Councilmember Clark said, we need some way to pick up waste, and obviously, not the city, but the owner of the animal is asked to pick up waste. However, without bags or a trash can, it certainly is not convenient. So with pet waste stations in our parks, they will have that opportunity. Plastic bags are there, and a trash can is provided. So implementation is underway, and once we get them, we will have them installed by Public Works. Finally, the last item on the announcements is our property and liability cost increase. I kind of choked on this one. We have insurance with Germa, Georgia Interlocal Risk Management. Our premium went up 37% this year from $110,564 to $151,512. It is too late this year to go out and get another insurance carrier or seek proposals because our insurance year starts May the 1st. However, next year, we will start earlier, and we will seek proposals or bids on our insurance coverage. That's probably a 90-day process, if not a six-months process to go out and seek proposals, but we will do that. This year, unfortunately, we just have to be as safety-conscious as possible. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, with that, this is the evening is concluded, we adjourn.